Good evening, I'd like to call the special meeting of the Board of Education to order. Could you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, student representatives.
Hello, so even though we've had a lot of snow days and everything, the Pom Craig High School community has still been very active and there have been a lot of activities going on. So, one activity was the Model UN trip, which started today and actually goes all weekend. And the Pom Craig students act out the actions of the United Nations, so it's a really great way for them to be able to bring history to life and get more interested in politics. Another activity was mock trial, and they actually won their first round for the first time in seven years, so that's something that's really great for the school. And today, they competed against Kingsley and Tremble High School for states. And the mock trial was for a murder case, so it was very interesting for everyone involved. There will be the third math competition of the year held at Brookfield High School this coming Monday, and Pom Craig High School students will be going to defend their championship because we won the last one. The AMC Math Test will be held next Tuesday, and AMC stands for American Mathematics Competition. So, this is a test where high school students can sign up. It's volunteer, it's volunteer, so they don't have to do it. And so, they decide to do it in order to test their problem-solving capabilities and really figure out how to use math in practical situations. Big Brother Big Sister is a club at Pom Craig High School that has about 30 members, and that club will be starting this Monday and continuing for 10 weeks. And in the club, the students go to Driggs Elementary School in Inner Waterbury, and they mentor and tutor the students there. And it's a great way to really get involved and be able to be role models for these students because a lot of the times their parents aren't there for them and they really need someone to be able to form that brother-sister connection with. Talent Show auditions occurred last Friday, yesterday, and were all wrapped up today. And so, the talent show will be held on Thursday, February 26th at 7:00 PM in the auditorium here. And it will feature acts such as singing, dancing, and bands, and a lot of Pom Craig students are very excited for it, not only to watch it, but to see their peers and to be in it. And finally, the senior semi-formal will take place on Saturday, February 21st from 7:00 to 11:00 PM, and it will be held at the Candlewood Inn in Brookfield, Connecticut. And the dance is for seniors at Pom Craig only, so it's a really great way for the classmates to really get to know each other like they haven't before because a lot of times there's all sorts of people there at the dances, and this is only for us. And it will feature a non-alcoholic fun bar, music by Volume Entertainment, a buffet station, and gourmet cupcakes, which everyone loves, so it can't be a bad thing. And the theme is Winter Whites, and tickets will be on sale this Monday through Friday, so hopefully we'll have a good turnout there.
So, with the, in the past couple of weeks, we had midterms and unfortunately, a blizzard. We've only experienced a couple inches of snow rather than feet, but that did move the exam schedule up a few days. This past Monday was supposed to be the Period 11-12 exam and then a makeup exam, but due to the early dismissal, the emergency early dismissal, the makeup exams will have to be scheduled with students and their teachers to be taken after school at some point. The Region 15 Tri-M Music Honor Society Benefit Concert will be held on Tuesday, February 10th at 7:00 in the PHS auditorium with a snow date on the 11th. And this is to benefit the Afghan Child Education and Care Organization, the Girls' Orphanage Music Program, and the Afghan National Institute of Music. That's really just to help raise awareness and money for the music program over in Afghanistan to help, you know, children feel a love of music, which is what we take for granted here. So, for sports, there is a boys varsity basketball game at Brookfield High School tonight at 7:00. On the 20th, the boys basketball team beat New Milford with a score of 63 to 52, which is nice. At Pom Craig High School tonight at 7:00, there is a girls varsity basketball game tonight and against Brookfield as well, and another game tomorrow at 7:00 against Joe Barlow High School. The girls have an outstanding record of 12 and 2, so that's good. The boys are not too far behind. And there's also a boys hockey game on Saturday at the Taft Rink against Brookfield High School, and as well with the boys varsity girls and boys track team, they're just practicing now and they have some junior varsity meets scheduled for the next coming weeks.
Thank you, any questions of the students?
I just, anybody else? I just had two questions. First, I want to thank you for the detail with which you give us all this great stuff going on. Two things, the semi-formal dance, what was the date on that?
That was Saturday, February 21st.
February 21st, and then the Afghan, I'm sorry? I don't think I qualify anymore, but...
Wait, you're not a senior?
I'm not a senior. For decades, let me tell you. And then the Afghan, the Child and the Music Festival, what was the date on that, too?
The Benefit Concert, that's going to be the 10th of February at 7:00 in the auditorium, and there's a snow date for the 11th on that.
Yeah.
So, no more snow days, except for tomorrow, please.
Great, thank you guys so much.
Any other questions?
I have one. Because of the delay in mid-years, is that going to delay report cards coming out of the high school?
I would believe so because students still have to make up their final exams, and that's going to be reported as an exam grade on their report card. But the teachers do have extra time to fill out the report cards with the semester grades that have already been closed, and then just those final exam grades.
The exam scores have to be in by Monday, so, Monday at 9:30. So, I'm not sure about report cards, but...
Okay, and it's supposed to snow on Monday. It's supposed to snow every day, I know.
You guys got this, I gotta tell you.
Thanks so much. Moving on, presentation. Mrs. Lyman, we're all looking forward to the Digital Learning Committee report. Oh, am I looking at the wrong?
No, no, you're all right. You're good.
Okay.
Midnight, not till midnight. Okay, good evening, thank you for having me here this evening. This evening, I'm very excited to share some work that's been going on in the district that we all find to be quite engaging and exciting. This is work that's exciting for both teachers and students. So, one of our goals in Region 15 is that we ensure that we prepare students for the 21st century. This is the century that our students will be deep into as they enter adulthood. Consider this also, some of the students that are actually in our schools today will probably live to see the 22nd century. So, certainly, the 21st century is their world. And why did we identify this goal and why this committee? Because in order to prepare our students, they need to be able to think, to solve problems, to communicate with others around the globe, and to have the skills that they're going to need to be competitive in a changing world. This work actually began in the year 2012-13. At that time, we identified a Digital Learning Study Committee that came together to begin to identify how each piece of the system within our district would need to develop and work together in order to bring our students into the digital age. This school year, we reconstituted that committee, expanded its membership. There were 32 members on committee this year. They included teachers and administrators from all levels, some Board of Education members. They worked to build off the goals of the 2012-13 Committee. They also looked at some work that had gone on at our high school around the topic of 21st century skills. In addition, we reviewed the work of multiple national organizations devoted to teaching and assessing 21st century skills and how technology can be used to support education. We researched what's done in other districts, we made phone calls, we conducted an informal survey, and Russ Sage and I visited multiple districts to find out what they were doing. The committee itself was presented with the following charge: to ensure that Region 15 learners are prepared to meet the challenges and expectations of the 21st century; to define our expectations for the learning that Region 15 students will experience; to develop common expectations regarding digital tools and resources and access to those devices; and to identify the professional learning needs for all of Region 15 staff. So, we began this work by thinking about the expectations for our learners. By the time a child graduates from Pom Craig High School, what are our expectations for the skills that that child will have acquired? We all know that there are skills in reading, writing, mathematics, the sciences, the social sciences, but there are other skills, skills that cut across all of those academic areas that are the skills that are necessary for students to be successful in the changing world in which they will be entering. These are skills that have also been identified by members of our high school as they began their work towards their NEASC re-accreditation. We looked at the work of the high school, and again, we looked at all of the research and good writings that had gone on, both in the world of education and in the world of business. Much of the work for 21st century learning is actually coming to us from what we're learning from our partners in business, about what they identify as necessary skills for successful employees, and what they see as the needs of the future, as they consider our economic future. From that work, we identified these five areas: collaboration, global citizenship, innovation, critical thinking, and communication. What you see before you on the screen is a summary of our expectations in each of those five areas. We also began to talk about what we believe would have to happen in our schools to ensure that students met those learner expectations. How could we ensure that students actually leave Pom Craig High School having developed those skills? Part of what we considered was how learning would need to change, how the opportunities we provided to our students would need to change, and how we must embrace the technology that students not only use already today, but will face as they go into the world of work, and ensure that we're providing students with the skills necessary to utilize those technologies. You can't prepare a student for the world of work and advanced learning without building skills in using technology. It includes everything from how to use the device, something most kids learn quite intuitively, to the more refined skills of knowing how to find, evaluate, and use information, and understanding how to communicate with people, how to build respectful relationships with people who may be different from yourself, and how to share your opinions and ideas with others. We also recognize that with technology, we can tailor learning to the needs of students. We can ensure that students have opportunities not just to learn about things about which they are passionate, but we can also ensure that students receive learning experiences that meet their learning styles and their learning needs in ways that are much more efficient and much more effective than we often are able to do in our classrooms today. So, what might this look like in the classroom? Well, in our middle schools currently, you'll find middle schoolers collaborating with each other on writing assignments. They give feedback to each other right on the same screen. They do this not just in their classrooms, but many middle schoolers have been heard to set appointments for later in the evening when they're going to work on this project some more after the school day. Our elementary students are learning about such things as coding, that's writing computer code. In fact, we have a group of students in one of our elementary schools who became very excited about a piece of coding software they'd been using, and actually put something up through social media about it. It was picked up by the CEO of the company, and they have a video chat coming up with that CEO in the coming days. Actually, it was canceled because of a snow day last week, but it's coming. We have high school students who are developing solutions to real-world problems, such things as figuring out how to prevent fruit from spoiling, and how to ensure that all students in schools can walk around with their own cup of water, ensuring that there's nothing in it that shouldn't be in that cup of water. We had some groups last year through our Digital Academy who not only tackled these problems, but found many ways to market their products as well. We have students who are learning how to research, building the skills that they'll need to communicate their message, finding ways to analyze sources and evaluate the multiple pieces of information with which they're bombarded daily. So, this is the learning that excites our students, and it excites our teachers. The committee engaged in a process to describe how learning should change, and then to think about what it would take to get there. The committee identified these recommendations: to implement those learner expectations that I described to you across the district, K to 12; to define our expectations for teaching. Not only should we have expectations for the learner, but we should have expectations for the teacher and the teaching, incorporating 21st century skills and technology use in order to achieve those expectations. The committee has identified some areas in which we will need to provide training and support to teachers in both instructional strategies and classroom techniques. Today's classroom needs to look different than yesterday's classroom. And we need to provide the technology necessary to meet those current and future needs for our students and our classrooms. So, what does that mean, the technology necessary to meet current and future needs? Well, first, we need to make sure that we have the infrastructure, the backbone, the system that allows our technology to work. Our current system does not provide reliable internet connection in all areas of each of our schools. Our current system is maxed out in many locations, meaning we can't add any more devices to it. The system that we're using was installed in 2007, it's eight years old. In that time, there's been a lot of advances in the technology. The newer equipment provides for better speed, better access, and more devices to be connected to it. So, we need to update both our wired and our wireless infrastructure to ensure reliable connectivity throughout our schools. We need to make sure that teachers and students have devices that are reliable as well. Currently, we have stories from teachers and students who experience interrupted learning because of a connection or device failure. The current level of availability does not allow for instructional use as often as teachers seek. We've heard stories of teachers who have planned lessons and started the day using the technology, only to find that the technology has not carried through in the manner they had hoped, and had to revise lessons in the middle of the day. We know we need to replace devices which have outlived their lifespan. Those we consider the ones in our schools right now that are between six and 11 years old. About 37% of our devices in schools are between six and 11 years old. Those are machines that are not running with the most current efficiencies or capabilities of devices. In order for us to do the work that we need to do, we need to make sure that the devices that we have in our schools are reliable and dependable. We also know that the number of devices that we have in our schools, while supportive of the work that's being done, is really not enough to meet the current demands that our teachers and students have. We're overusing our current devices, which further inhibits their reliability. Our laptops only power on for so long. Our technicians have difficulty scheduling maintenance because our machines need to be in use. We hold on to these machines that are 11 years old even when they're not reliable because they're better than nothing. We have requests for devices that exceed the number of devices available in all of our schools. And as I mentioned, we've had teachers actually tell us about how they've refrained from planning lessons which might utilize devices because they often can't get a full classroom set. We need to create a multi-year plan for increasing the number of devices in all our schools. We started down this path a couple of years ago, looking at how we could provide more devices in each of our schools to ensure that we had student access when it was needed. I'd like to next show you a short video.
In connection with the text, we go beyond the text. We were looking at some video links today, so all of their work where they might be answering questions always has a video link or two, just like a four or five-minute clip. Today, it was on what influences climate. So, they can, we do it in class, we discuss it in class, but tonight, as they're doing their homework, you know, I can say to them, "You can go back and, you know, view that link and jot down any additional questions you might have." And they do it.
I think we are starting to blow out the sides of the classroom. I really, we...
What does that mean?
It means distance learning, for one thing. It means that the hours in school have now become any hour. This information is available to them when they need it, when we are not there necessarily.
Students absent, it tends not to be an issue because everything is available digitally.
They are able to collaborate on a live document, so that each person adds to the doc, is able to read what others have contributed to that doc, and then respond, so that they are seeing there is a certain simultaneity about this experience. We saw a surge of participation engagement, especially by the reluctant learner, by the student who might be much less inclined to join in a verbal discussion, who will jump onto a doc and be an active participation, an active participant in that discussion. Okay, the students were to put together either a brochure or a slide presentation to convince an audience to come to their particular time period, geological time period. They were supposed to look at the climate, how the geology had changed, or what was the current geology at the time, what the animals were, the organisms, and why are they interesting to visit? They were given templates for the brochure and for the slide presentation. They had to produce separate projects, but they shared information and helped each other.
For presentations, it doesn't have as much text, and it's more pictures and bullet points, but for a brochure, the text is smaller.
Because you can share it with other people to help you along the way, and it's easier to transport because, to save, so you can work on it from anywhere.
Even when it did cool down and animals started dying because it was getting too cold, it was warm, like considering what temperature we live at now.
So, it really incorporated a lot of information literacy, as well as the technology using the Google Apps, into one package using real class content.
This is their world, and we have joined it. They are very comfortable with this means of electronic communication, and we are using it for instruction and communication and collaboration. I would like to start some collaboration with other schools.
Outside of RMS, other countries.
Video visits with authors. I think the possibilities are so endless.
Oh, the possibilities are huge.
So, I think from that little piece, you could see that we're ready to prepare our students to meet the demands of their world of the 21st century, but it's going to take a commitment on all our parts. We're going to need to change our teaching practices, we're going to need to meet students where they are, we're going to need to ensure that our schools provide the resources that they need. Recommendations of the Digital Learning Committee address each of these, and we feel that we are ready for the challenge. How'd I do, Rich? 15 minutes?
Thank you, Kelly. Any questions of Mrs. Lyman?
I just have one question, possibly more as I read more, but it does say that on page six, that, you know, we have almost 40% of our devices have outlived their lifespan of six to 11 years. So, you know, how is it that we came to be here? With 40% being six to 11 years, you know, already outlived their lifespan, how is it that we've come to where we find ourselves?
Well, I think a couple of things have happened. I mean, one is that the need for the technology has increased in ways that we probably couldn't have anticipated five years ago. So, we have held on to some of these older devices when we bought more devices. Instead of replacing some of the older ones, we've kept them in order to increase the number of devices. So, I think that's one thing that's happened. Another thing that has happened frankly is that we have not had consistent annual funding for technology. Some years, we've been able to fund more than we've been able to fund in other years. It's a combination of the two things.
I'm certainly not happy when I hear "it's better than nothing." And we hold on to these because it's better than nothing, so, okay, thank you.
Kelly.
Go ahead.
When you talk about creating a multi-year plan for increasing the number of devices at schools, what are you talking about? Cows, computer labs, like what does that look like?
Yeah, we've done a very extensive review of every machine that we have in district, where it is, the age of it. We have an annual inventory that's quite accurate, but beyond that, we've looked at the use of each of those machines. Some of them are in specialty labs that would need, where a certain type of machine is required. We have also met with the administrators in each of the buildings to talk about how devices are used, various devices that are deployed throughout their building, to identify what we would need to do to continually improve access. We know that we need to keep some wired labs, we need to keep some places outside of the classroom where students can go to do some work. We know that we need to keep some particular types of devices in elementary classrooms. But yes, we know that the devices that give us the greatest flexibility are the devices that are portable, and so that would be having devices on carts. The technology continues to change. One of the devices that we've looked at and that we've seen deployed in lots of other school districts is the Chromebook. It's a very affordable device that has no hard drive, it's essentially used for connecting to the internet. We have the software infrastructure, if you will, to support that, so that all of the productivity software that you're used to using is now, a lot of that is cloud-based, and a lot of it's free through Google. And we're fortunate, we've been a Google district for some years, so we think that the Chromebook on carts is probably the best way for us to increase, are both the reliability and the number of devices.
And so, like right now at the elementary schools, are there like two cows per grade level, or how does that...
There is, our elementary schools have one computer on wheels, one set of laptops, some netbooks still, per grade. In our middle school, we have one of those for each team, which means it's shared across four teachers. And at our high school, we've deployed a variety of carts. The high school's a really different...
Right, different animal.
...setting, yeah.
But so, what are we looking to do?
Well, incrementally increase over time, you know, so the next thing would be to get...
Just keep little by little, or...
Right, right, exactly. We would want to start, in our elementary school, the feedback we have from principals is that grades four and five in particular are really clamoring for more. Our middle schools tell us that if we can have cart in every classroom...
Right.
You know, that's what they would prefer. And our high school, of course, you know, needs a lot of portable devices.
Thank you.
Two questions for you. Page number five, need update the wired and wireless infrastructure to ensure reliability connecting through our schools. What is the timeframe for that? How much time... How much time do we need to improve that infrastructure? A year, six months, two years?
Are you talking about installation time?
No. What do we physically need time-wise for the infrastructure to bring in the digital learning that we're looking for now?
It's not really a time issue. We've already had consultants come out and assess our system. We know what we need to purchase. It's a matter of purchasing it and changing it out. That couple days?
Cost factor.
Yeah.
What would the cost factor be for? We're still doing that? Okay. The other question I have, do you have a plan, create a multiple-year plan for increasing the number of devices in all schools? Are we looking at two years, three years, four years?
No, multi-year. That's the thing with technology, right? You really can't stop purchasing technology because technology ages, it needs to be replaced. So, you need to have an annual plan. Included in our plan needs to be a way to increase the number of devices. To Sharon's question before, how did we get here? We got here because we stopped replacing some devices in favor of adding more devices. What we need to think about is how do we replace the devices that we have right now that are aged, that have aged out? And how do we, in the next year, start to increase the number of devices? An effective technology plan includes annual replacement, in our case, annual addition, because we are not at the level of having enough devices to meet the need.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Lyman, so the create multi-year plan, just so I'm clear, so the first peak at that will come at budget time in terms of-
Yes.
-funding the plan? And then you mentioned that you visited multiple districts, and did you, did you reach out to many districts, or how did you find the ones that you visited?
We identified four districts that had all done something a little bit different. We wanted to get a range of experiences or learn about a range of experiences. We looked at one district that had purchased iPads for every student in the high school and now is moving to the middle school. We looked at another district that did what I call on-demand access. They essentially purchased a cow for every classroom. We looked at another district that went one-to-one with Chromebooks, offering a Chromebook to every student, starting from the middle school, like middle school, all the way up through high school. And we looked at a fourth district who did a combination of allowing students to bring devices and providing devices to students.
So, would your plan pick one of those or shade of one of those?
Yeah, I mean, I think some of the conclusions that we took away from that was that, I already told you, that we think that the Chromebook is an economical and effective way to go. I think that right now has been identified as our device of choice. You have to always balance this against what's reasonable, fiscally reasonable in a place. It's not reasonable for us to go, to flood our classrooms so that every child has a device. That's far too many devices right now. But we can begin to build that on-demand access so that we continue to increase the number of devices.
How does bring-your-own-device work into any of this? Or is there any benefit if people purchased their own Chromebook and brought it in?
Yeah, the district that we looked at, after three years, has about 50% of their middle schoolers bringing devices. They're moving this on to the high school next year. They were very clear with us that you can't rely on every student having a device. So, they started out initially purchasing, they did a three-year phase in, and they started out initially purchasing enough devices so that 80% of their students would have a device. And they are now at a point where they have enough devices for 100% of their students, but they allow students to bring their own. And they uncovered a lot of challenges with that, which they shared with us. It sounds from, and we've talked with other districts that either started BYOD, that's what it's called, Bring Your Own Device, or have explored it, and some of the lessons learned would suggest that if you're going to do that, you really need to be very specific about the device that comes in, so that you don't have the difficulty connecting when it's in your building, that you don't have the teacher spending lots of time helping the child get on the machine or know how to use the machine. And then we also have the smarter balanced assessment to consider, and we have specifications for device types that will work for smarter balanced assessment as well.
Does the Chromebook work for smarter balanced?
It does, as long as it's got certain settings on it. So, even if your child brings a Chromebook, in order for your child to use that Chromebook during testing, we need to make sure that it's been set in a certain way.
Thank you.
Paul, did you have a question?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay. Any other questions?
You know, the only thing I would like to say is that a lot of these questions that are being asked will be asked in much more detail on February 5th, when we have our technical workshop, which is part of our financial workshops that we've been having all year. And we will get into a lot more details and a lot more questions, certainly. It's just, I didn't feel like this was the forum to go into those details right now.
Do you think we're concluding, or do you think we're concluding, or does somebody have another question? Because I just want to leave you with a thought if we're concluding. Everybody good? Okay. The thought I want to leave you with is despite the needs that I described to you this evening, there are some very exciting things happening in our schools, and our students are having some great experiences. And we are building both a climate, a culture, and a desire on the part of our teachers to continue to do more with this. In some of the places that we visited, that was part of the attention that needed to be given in order to get these programs up and running. And we have that in place here, in not just pockets, in lots of places throughout our schools. So, I feel very fortunate about that, which is why I started this presentation by saying that I wanted to share some exciting work with you, because there are some very exciting things going on in our schools, and we're hoping that we can continue to grow those. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly.
Okay, move on to the agenda. I need a motion to approve the minutes of the January 13th special meeting.
Motion to approve the January 13th, 2015 minutes of the special meeting.
Yeah, are there any additions, submissions, or corrections? There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? One abstention. Thank you. Information and proposals, Finance Committee?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On January 14th, we held our finance and facilities meeting. The agenda included a review of the budget line items, an update on potential capital improvement items, and setting a date for the financial workshop to explore technology upgrades. Regarding the budget, those line items which are particularly reimbursed by the state are showing a large deficit on our overall budget. Since we won't know until March what percentage of the funding formula the state will use for cost-sharing reimbursement, we are recommending a budget spending freeze at this time. The update on the capital improvements at this time indicates a capital outlay of approximately $3.29 million, with the largest expense of updating the turf and track field between $750,000 to $1 million. No decision has yet been made on how we will finance these expenditures. We're looking at inclusion in the budget, lease options, and possible bonding. We have established a technical workshop meeting on February 5th at 7:30 PM at the central office. This technical workshop will go into more detail as to the items that were asked of Kelly this evening regarding our structures, regarding our upgrading of our existing software programs. Madam Chair, that concludes my financial report. Regarding the Pension Committee, we haven't met yet, so I have no report at this time on the Pension Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Policies and Curriculum Committee?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next PNC meeting is February 9th at 6:00 PM in the media center here at the high school. There's been no PNC meeting since the last full board meeting, so I have no official report. I would just draw the board's attention to the first presentation of new courses in the packet the board received. Both new courses are programming for game design and pre-engineering, and I just wanted to point out that those are both technology courses with heavy emphasis on software, programming, and design. And, you know, even game design, I mean, it's geared towards something that students, you know, like or enjoy, and yet it has many, many components to it that would be a benefit to those students in the real world in terms of the skills that they would learn in that class. So, I just throw that out there. That's all, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Okay, other committee reports, UTO Advisory Council?
There is no report.
No report, okay. Wellness Committee?
That was given the last meeting by Kate.
Thank you. Board member comments? Okay, there being none. Move on to Superintendent's Report.
The board has its personnel report. There are also two action items on the agenda tonight that are related to the board's approval of an international field trip to Paris, London, Brussels, and Amsterdam. The board approved that trip on May 12th, 2014, and it is scheduled to depart on March 28th. We all know that travel anywhere incurs some level of risk. At the same time, based on recent events in Paris and Brussels and reports in the news, my recommendation is that travel to the cities on the current itinerary poses an unnecessary additional risk for our students. I recommend to the board that in the interest of student safety, the board rescind its approval of this trip and authorize a new itinerary to be developed. Parents have been informed of this recommendation. Certainly, reasonable individuals can have different views on this issue. Nevertheless, it is my responsibility to inform the board and to make a recommendation. The board will be voting on that tonight. A meeting is scheduled at which parents will have the opportunity to give input into the development of the new itinerary, assuming that one is authorized, and a representative of the tour operator will describe parents' options should they choose not to have their child participate. And that's it.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, comments from citizens. The Board of Education will recognize citizens of Middlebury and Southbury, and I ask you to keep your comments to three minutes.
Hello, this is Chris, everyone. I'm a Middlebury resident, and my daughter is currently scheduled to go on that international field trip to the itinerary which was sponsored, outlined. I'm against the idea of canceling the trip, and I'll tell you why. Rational people make risk-based assessments on facts, not fear. There are currently no facts to support canceling the current international itinerary, nor any to support a safer international alternative. While acts of terror and violence in Australia and Europe are unsettling, they are not caused to alter the current plans. The U.S. State Department reiterated its worldwide travel caution in December 2014. This is not a new worldwide travel caution. It's been in effect for years, and has only been reiterated numerous times over the past few years. This travel caution was actually in effect in March 2014 when this trip was approved. The U.S. State Department currently has no travel alerts or warnings to any of the cities currently affected on that trip, Paris, Brussels, Amsterdam, or London, nor do they imply, state, or claim that travel to these cities is unsafe, nor do they state, imply, or claim that travel to any other international city is safer. EF Tours, the company who runs this trip, agrees. They've been doing trips to this region for this region for 34 years and in business for 50. The actual numbers are these. U.S. citizens traveling abroad have a 1 in 20 million chance of being killed by an act of terror, while our chance of dying by a lightning strike is 1 in 5.5 million. Dying in the shower or bathtub is 1 in 800,000. Dying in a car crash abroad, 1 in 19,500. This represents the biggest risk of traveling abroad, dying in a car crash. Our risk of dying in a car crash on U.S. soil is 1 in 10,000. We're actually 20 times more likely to die of toxoplasmosis than by terrorist attack. Toxoplasmosis is an interesting brain-eating amoeba protozoan that kills people because they've cleaned the litter box, apparently. It supposedly comes from cat feces, and this is the way just about every pregnant woman gets out of cleaning the litter box. Two to three times more people, more U.S. students die each year from playing sports than Americans do by traveling abroad through acts of terror. And these numbers, when I'm talking about the 1 in 20 million and how often U.S. citizens die in terror, these include all the journalists killed in Pakistan, Afghanistan, and Iraq. Those numbers are in these figures, those actual figures, if you want them, for the years the State Department has released for 2009, 10, and 11 are all less than 15. So, a logical risk assessment based on the figures and the advice of the agencies whose job is designed to assess this risk do not support changing or canceling this trip. More importantly, it's also fair that you understand that if we do change or cancel this trip, all parents involved will suffer an economic loss. As per the notice from EF Tours, which I have a copy of, if the trip is canceled or changed, parents can get a new itinerary, subject to availability, subject to cancellation fees, termination fees, and any other change fees that might be involved. So, there will be an economic loss to people. The other type of refund here is not a refund, it is in fact a voucher, a voucher that can be used only for travel through EF Tours and only in a limited time span through the end of next year. For a lot of the parents who have kids going on this trip, that voucher will be worthless and represent a total economic loss to the parents involved in their investment. The other fact here is if we have a voucher to send us on an international trip, what is a trip that the board would approve if not this one? There is no travel alert, there is no travel warning to any of the cities involved. There is only a worldwide travel caution which has been in effect for five years. If that's the case, and we're canceling the trips to these specific cities who are not deemed unsafe by the agencies whose job it is to deem them safe or not, there really isn't an itinerary that you can-
Chris, I'm at, can you wrap it up?
I can wrap it up.
I'll give you 10 seconds.
It's a baby steel, and he'll tell you that a rational assessment of a perceived threat and an irrational response to any threat is more dangerous than the threat itself. If the board's decision is to cancel or alter the trip, then we've made both mistakes. As rational people, we make decisions every day to let our kids play sports, to drive a car, to take a shower, or to change the litter box. We make decisions, we make these decisions even though these risks are far greater than the risk of our current travel to Europe. I ask you to assess the risk and make a rational decision based on facts and not fear, and preserve our trip's itinerary and our parents' investment.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Hi, my name is Terry O'Brien, and I am from Middlebury, and my two daughters, Kelly and Claire, do request that I speak here tonight. Both my girls have worked tremendously hard during their school career of Region 15, and they're really excited to experience their first time abroad as a culmination to their high school experience and education. Although I understand and appreciate the board's attempt to protect our children from harm, it seems that the exponentially minuscule possibility of an act of terrorism against our children, be tempered with the incredibly memorable lifetime experience of learning about the history and culture of other people, which could be in itself have the capability of being a pivotal turning point in their young life. My belief is that when we allow ourselves to cave and change the course of our life and our children's lives to terrorism and its pathetic and revolting attempt to make us submissive, we voluntarily wear the chains of victimhood. Is this the type of message that we want to send to our children? While I do understand there is a potential danger, the danger to this group would appear to be so small as to be practically nonexistent. With what has happened, there could be a good argument that Paris and Brussels are currently the two safest cities on the planet. Today, unfortunately, terrorism and its aftermath is a part of our contemporary world. But rather than put our head in the sand in perceived safety, my belief is that first, we must choose what is best for ourselves and our children, not by the measure- we must choose what is best for ourselves and our children, not by the measure of the potential to be involved in a terrorist act, but rather by the measure of the value of learning and studying another way of life. Let's not forget that a violent, murderous act of unbelievable proportions took place in a small town next to ours, showing that terrorism and violence can strike anywhere, anytime. In the words of Martin Luther King, "We must build dikes of courage to hold back the flood of fear." Let's choose to be courageous rather than succumb to irrational fear. In conclusion, as the saying does go, it's also about the money, not just the principle. Losing $3,400 per daughter for a total of $6,800 is not an amount that is easily forfeited by me, and I'll lose this money as well as the other many parents who will lose if their high schoolers are not allowed to take this trip. So I would request again tonight that you would continue with the existing program, and I thank you very much for the opportunity to present my view.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I live in Middlebury, and I also have a daughter that's supposed to be going on this trip. Chris stole a lot of my thunder. We must have done the same research and looked at a lot of the same facts. So to that end, I'll talk a little bit more about the terrorism aspect itself. Just to kick it off, don't rescind the trip as planned. Don't. All this terrorism, to support what Chris stated in his facts, the terrorism, it's an attack on the mind and confidence. It's horrible. But if you're going to go to the effort to cancel this trip based on a perceived risk of a terrorist attack, the terrorism is designed to convince you that you are not safe, that the government can't protect you, no one can protect you, and you always have to be looking over your shoulder. The tragedies that don't get reported on a regular basis, the car crashes, it's because they're so common, no one pays attention to them. It's the gore and the graphic effect and the sheer terror from a terrorist activity. Even if the bombs in Boston, if the Boston Marathon hadn't gone off, if they had been found, the effect of the terror would still be there. People would still be scared. It creates a theater of the mind. Following this logic of rescinding this trip, the logical conclusion is you have to cancel every field trip that involves a bus ride from this school, because the odds of a bus getting into an accident from here to point A far, far exceed, as Chris Athley pointed out, the odds of a terrorist attack. I found that same stat, the 1 in 20. There's a separate chart in The Economist from April 13th when it talked about the panic involved with the asteroid that could have hit us. It spells out all these statistics, all these odds. Regina's recommendation is an emotional response. I give her the benefit of the doubt, that it's good-natured and in the students' best interest, but it's not based on fact. It's not. There's no statistic to support it. So to that end, I do ask, insist that you rescind any option to cancel this trip as planned. On a separate note, going back to the technology, that video of all the collaborative technologies, before you go slapping yourselves on the back for it, that technology is 15 years old of collaboration, so you better start doing your research as far as what the cutting-edge technology is, because that's way behind, and it will hurt our students.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I'm Gina Dovento. I'm a Southbury resident, and I have a daughter, Ashley Dovento, who is a junior APHS here. Sorry. I just want to let you know that my husband, Robert, and I have reviewed the State Department website, and we're confident that our daughter can travel safely on the current itinerary of the trip. I would like the board to consider the financial sacrifices that many parents have made to send our children on this European trip, and I'm asking that the board keep the current itinerary and have the trip remain the same as planned. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Hi. You guys already know me. I'm Kelly Domigala. This is my sister, Claire Domigala. We're residents of both Southbury and Middlebury, and we just wanted to give a student's opinion on the Europe trip, so we're both hopefully going on this trip. And so we just wanted to say that we think that the loss of the trip would be a very big loss, because we wouldn't be able to experience the culture and the history at the other countries, and neither of us have really been out of the country. We've gone to Canada, and that's about it. So we've never really been exposed to these different cultures, and we think that it would be a great opportunity, and not only the opportunity of the culture, but also the cost. For both of us, it's $6,800, and that's a lot of money to just lose. Because we're seniors, we won't have the chance to go on this trip next year, and so we'd be losing pretty much everything, and I've been looking forward to this for four years, and so I just really don't want to lose it. And so, I just wanted to say that I've been looking forward to this trip since I was a freshman and I first got involved in the art department. I know that Mr. Farimira and Dr. Bosman have the students' best interests in mind. I think due to the fact that neither of them have desired to cancel this trip, that they think that it is in fact safe for us to go and that we should be able to go on this trip. Dr. Bosman and Mr. Farimira have been to Europe countless times, and they know this itinerary. They know the tours, the tour guides that we're going with, and I think that we'll be very safe there. I wanted to point out that a goal of the Region 15 education is global citizenship, and taking away this opportunity from the students to really diversify themselves and immerse themselves in a different culture would be stripping them of a wonderful opportunity and experience, and I urge you all to not rescind this and definitely continue with the itinerary as planned. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ashley Dovento, and I'm a Southbury resident, as my mother explained. I will be hopefully going on this trip as well, and I feel as though the Europe trip itinerary should be kept as-is, because canceling the trip will cause a lot of scheduling issues for many of the families and make many of the families who have seniors going on this trip unable to go. So if we change this trip, many of these students will lose their money that they have invested, and when we signed up for this trip and when we signed the permission slip form, the students and the parents accepted any possible risks of going abroad on this trip. So to go back on that now and say that their consideration is invaluable at this point is kind of going against letting the parents choose whether or not they want their kids to go and have this opportunity to go to Europe. I thank you, and I please urge you not to change the itinerary for the Europe trip to keep it in everyone's best interest.
Thank you. Any more comments?
I have a daughter who's also going on the Europe trip, and I didn't plan to say anything here, but I do just wanted to reiterate everything they're saying. I totally agree with them. My daughter and I went on an EF Tour trip a year and a half ago. I have all the confidence in EF Tours to make that decision for us if there was a need to be concerned. My daughter's been looking forward to this like they have tremendously, and it is going to be a financial burden if we have to, you know, eat that money, so to speak. So I definitely applaud all their research and they've done this too.
Hello again, everyone. I just want to just point out something that is kind of interesting. Every year, there are multiple art trips into New York City, and 9/11 occurred in New York City, but we still take trips to there, and everyone's fine, you know, getting on a train, going into Grand Central Terminal and walking around the city. I had a trip earlier this year, and I felt completely safe. And then also, right now, we have students up in Boston at a Model UN meeting, and, you know, we had also the Boston bombings, and we feel perfectly safe with sending our students, our friends, and just on that trip to experience Model UN, and no one ever really gave a second thought about that. But now we have an act of terrorism that would cost people thousands of dollars just to postpone a trip. Like, I'm not going on the Euro trip, but it's still $3,400. That's pocket change. It's a lot of money.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Oh, oh, oh! I forgot about the trip. I'm Christine Kubation from Southbury, and I just want to applaud all of you for the workshops that you've been having. I was able to attend one of them, and I really enjoyed it, and I'm excited about the one that's coming up for technology. I would like you to consider, though, in the spirit of transparency, to possibly consider having the meeting here open and on TV, so parents and all citizens can watch it. There's a lot of people who can't come to these meetings, and I think the topic of technology is very important, and I think it would only help with the whole process with preparing for the budget if we all understood what the issues were. I hope you'll consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. Any other comments? Okay, there being none, we will move on. We have no old business. Okay, we have new business requiring board action. I need a motion to approve the update of Policy Number 3160, Board Budget Procedures and Line Item Transfers.
Move that the Board of Education, upon recommendation by the Policy and Curriculum Committee, approves the updated Policy Number 3160, Board Budget Procedures and Line Item Transfers as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
Do we need to change the name?
Point of discussion, I think we wanted the name to be, we want it to be Board Budget Procedures and Line Item Transfers, right? Is that correct?
Madam Chair, I don't know if it's possible, but there are nine items on here. Can we take them all as a group, or do we have to go through each one separately?
Paul, I know it's time-consuming, but I think we ought to do it all separately, if you don't mind. Okay? I won't read what, I'll just ask for a motion for item number two. Wait, we need to vote. Okay, on item number one. There's no change. Okay. It's correct the way it's worded. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Unanimous. Okay, approval for number two. A motion, please.
Go ahead, Sharon.
Move that the Board of Education, upon recommendation by the Policy and Curriculum Committee, approves the updated Policy Number 5125, Confidentiality and Access to Educational Records as Presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Unanimous. Motion number three.
Move that the Board of Education, upon recommendation by the Policy and Curriculum Committee, approves the updated Policy Number 615, Home Labor Procedures as presented.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Unanimous. Item number four.
Move that the Board of Education, upon recommendation by the Policy and Curriculum Committee, approves the change in program, the new Course 61, as presented.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Unanimous. Number five. A motion for number five, please.
Move that the Board of Education, upon recommendation by the Policy and Curriculum Committee, approves the new course proposal, Dynamic PE.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Unanimous. Item number six.
Rescind the Board of Education, upon recommendation by the PNC, approves the new course proposal, AP Macra Economics, as presented.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Unanimous. Item number seven.
Move that the Board of Education, upon recommendation by the Policy and Curriculum Committee, approves the new course proposal, Applicables Economics for AP as presented. Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any, those opposed? Abstentions? Unanimous. Okay, for number eight, rescind the approval of the international field trip to Amsterdam, Brussels, Paris, and London. When it comes time to vote, I'd like a show of hands. It'll just be easier. I have not polled the board, so I don't know what direction anybody's going into.
Madam Chair?
Yep.
Would it be worth having some discussion prior to the vote?
We can make the motion, and then we will have our discussion.
I'd like to make a motion that we be able to discuss this prior to voting.
We always do.
You need to make the motion. And then we can discuss, okay?
So I need a motion.
Move that the Board of Education rescinds the approval of the international field trip to Amsterdam, Brussels, Paris, and London as approved on May 12th, 2014.
May I have a second? Okay. Open it up now for discussion.
I have a question, because the way, and this may be just process, but we're rescinding the itinerary as it is because you want to develop a new itinerary that may decrease any unnecessary risk. Am I correct in that? That's what we're looking at? Pardon me?
I think that that not necessarily follows. If this is voted down, it doesn't necessarily follow that number nine will be approved, you know?
Agreed.
So you can't, if you vote against this, you can't vote against this thinking that number nine will be approved. You know what I'm saying? They're standalone motions.
Well, that's, that's correct. That was kind of where my question was going, so thanks for clarifying that.
Madam Chair, if I could say something?
Sure.
Probably to show her my position, is when I walked in here tonight, I was all for rescinding the approval, but after listening to all the people talking tonight, I'm at a point where I believe that no matter what we do with the children or where we send them, they're going to be in danger. Danger is just the way we've begun to live our lives these days. So maybe rescinding the trip at this point really wouldn't provide the security for the children as we thought it might. Also, I was under the impression initially that we were not responsible as a Board of Education for any problems that do occur, but apparently we are. And if that's the case, that means if we put them on a bus and send them to New York, we're in trouble too. So no matter what we do, it's going to be a responsibility of the Board of Education, and I'm looking at so much work that's going into this trip right now, and I know this is an absolute 180-degree change from when I walked in here tonight, but I haven't heard any parents at all say that they would like to see the trip canceled. So I think sometimes people talking up and speaking help to change minds, and anyway, I think I'd like the board to just keep in mind that whatever trip we would, if we did approve, was going to probably have somewhat the same degree of danger in it, if that's the right word to use, but I get worried when we have to change our lives because of terrorists. It just doesn't seem the way to go. So anyway, I just had to say that. That's my piece. That's my piece for the night, so thank you.
I, I would, I would say that while that may be popular, I do think that not only does this Board have a fiduciary responsibility for sixty-plus million-dollar budget, we also have a responsibility to look at information that's provided to us and to minimize the risk at any chance. I, I wish that both these motions were put together. Um, I have heard from several parents who do not mind having the itinerary changed if it's the opinion that it will minimize the risk. Do I agree that none of us can predict? Of course I agree that none of us can predict. Um, but I do think it's a responsibility of the Board and the administration in working with EF Tours to minimize that risk. As unpopular as it may be with people that spoke here tonight, I have heard from other people, several people, more than who spoke here, that they want their children, their young adults, to have the experience of a European trip and all that that provides. But, that, excuse me, sir, you had your chance and I did interrupt you. But I do think that it is the position, at least of this Board, to look at all the information and try to find something that minimizes the risk for any child that is in the care of the district in any type of travel that we authorize.
Yes, I just, friends of mine who live in Woodbury returned ten days ago from a trip to Europe. The European trip included France and it included Italy. I asked them, did you have any problem with what you saw over there? Did you feel threatened or anything like that? Their assurance to me was, no, they were on a trip with fifty-six people, they experienced no complications, no fear of where they were, and the trips were won very, very effectively so that they did not feel unsafe anywhere they were, hotels, in the streets, on the buses, anywhere. Was there security all around them? Yes, there was. You know, it's ironic because we express fear in what we're going to do. I can tell you right now that if I took you to Blue Hills Avenue in Hartford, Albany Avenue in Hartford, Howard Street in New Haven, okay, and Dixwell Avenue, the fear that you will feel on those streets in two communities in the state of Connecticut, okay, you will say to me, get me out of here right now, because you cannot even imagine what goes on up there. And if you watched the news this morning, you saw it in Hartford already, what happened with the shooting. Thank you.
Any other board comments?
Yes. Um, I too came in here with a perspective on this as a parent, the, and I've been swayed by the comments I've heard tonight. Uh, but it also raises a couple of questions. Regina, I, I wanted to ask, have the teachers going, who were scheduled to go on the trip, have they raised any concerns with you? That's my first question. And my second question is, can, is it also your information that this is a travel caution and that it has been in place all this time? Or has there been some raised level of, of caution, uh, more recently since the events in Paris?
Um, I had forwarded to the Board and I had forwarded also to parents, um, information that was out there from the State Department as well as a, a recent news item. So, it, it wasn't, um, my judgment was predicated not only on the caution and alert that are currently there, but as well as the news. And regarding your question about, um, about the teachers who are going on the trip, the, I, Mr. Lungarini and I have certainly met with the two main advisors of the trip, um, and, and, um, we all did work together to come up with this recommendation.
Madam?
You're out of order, sir, for the second time.
Madam Chair, uh, I, I was, um, I think it was, it's good that, um, the email did go out to parents because it does give them an opportunity, perhaps if they are, uh, I thought, well, maybe there's, you know, a ton of people that don't want to go but were afraid to sort of rock the boat and be the ones that stood up and said, you know, I really don't want to go. Uh, and I, I don't believe that to be the case because those people would have emailed you, so they had the opportunity to do that in confidence. Uh, so, and I'm hearing, you know, there's the issues of, of liability, but as Mr. Babrick pointed out, I, I just don't see how we are any more or less liable, um, whether they go or don't go on the current itinerary. Uh, so, uh, I, I appreciate the, the superintendent's recommendation and, and concern. Um, I, I really, really do, but I, I think I would be in the camp where, um, the, the original itinerary should stand.
Any other, any other comments from board members? Okay, um, there being none, um, I'll have the final say. Um, I'm still, I, I, I don't know, maybe I'll make, well, I have to make a decision in, um, in less than a minute. But I, I have spent numerous hours, phone calls, emails, um, with Mrs. Botford and Mr. McLively in conjunction with, um, um, Mr. Lungarini. And I, I think everyone has the, a genuine concern for the safety of our students. I don't deny that, um, at all. And I don't think, um, the superintendent's decision was an emotional one. She's doing what she feels is right and good for the safety of everybody and it's up to the Board to make the decision on whether to rescind and that's basically all I have to say.
I would just, I'm sorry, Pat.
No, go ahead.
You wanted to end on that, but, you know, I, I would say that there is a difference between a high threat and a general threat. And, you know, my son went on this last year and if I was faced with this, I would have said, oh, okay, change the itinerary. He's going to enjoy going to Europe, he's going to have a blast, he's going to learn a lot of great things. But that's all I have to say, as unpopular as it may be. Thanks.
Okay, I'd like a show of hands. I think it'll just be easier for, um, yeah, the motion has been made and seconded. We're in the, we're in the discussion phase. Now we're going to go into the voting stage. A show of hands, it'll be easier for Gretchen to, um...
Do you do a roll call? Do we need to vote?
Okay.
Or just keep your hands up?
Yeah, yeah, keep your hands up. All those in favor to rescind?
Is Mary on the line or no?
No.
We talked to her, still count over there.
We're tallying up the weighted vote. It wa-
What you did is, it passed. I voted to rescind. What you voted to rescind, it passed.
Okay.
So now we can move on to number nine.
Okay, the trip as is, is not going forward. Um, do you want to make a motion, um, for number nine?
Move that the Board of Education authorizes the superintendent of schools to develop a new international field trip itinerary for future presentation and approval at a future board meeting of education.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Uh, we'll do a show of hands.
So those that, yeah, so those that didn't want it, don't want a new one, don't even want a new one looking?
What are the options? What are, what are, number one, what are our options? Number two, I know, what are our options, number two, number one, okay? When is it going to be? Okay? And what is it going to be? I feel that's only fair to the parents.
Yeah. Yeah. So this is, we did rescind. What is going to pass? This is for...
This is out of order. We need to have discussion among ourselves.
I am really being very lenient, um, but I, I really wish, um, the Board could get on with its business. So, we have, we were in the process of voting. How many are in favor of?
Shouldn't we have discussion first, Madam Chair?
I did ask for discussion and there was none, but I, I am more than happy now, let's have some discussion because, um, Mr. Cookson brought up some very good questions.
We all have voted.
Okay. Well, maybe, um, we voted and it passed. Regina, would you like, now that we're, where we are right now, we are, we have approved the, the motion to change the itinerary, do you want to share af, with us now, what you're proposing?
Madam, Madam Chair, I may not have followed this, but I don't know how all of a sudden we approved number nine. I thought we were still in the discussion stage. The only thing we've done so far is to say-
No, there was a show of hands, Paul.
Show of hands before, before, uh, any discussion on number nine?
No, we had, I asked for discussion, there was none. I asked, I asked for a vote and everybody raised their hands and I know you did.
Well, because I didn't understand what you're saying. I think, uh, Mr. Cookson brought up some very good, I, very good points on number nine. I think we need to address that. And I don't think we could just shut that down and not address it. Just my opinion.
We didn't, we didn't have a no or abstain.
I don't think we finished the vote.
We didn't have a full vote. I, I will grant you that. I asked for all those in favor of this motion. I saw Janet's hand, I saw Richard's, I saw Paul's, I saw, I, I could say any opposed to continue with the vote. Are there any abstentions to this?
I will abstain.
Okay. Okay, the motion has passed. Now, I've asked our superintendent to give us an update on what may be a change.
Um, there, there, there is a meeting that is scheduled. Parents have already been invited to that meeting. And at that meeting, a representative of EF will discuss options if any parents choose not to participate or not to have their child participate in the trip. Um, and the teachers will be there to hear any input that you may have, um, about potential itineraries. That cannot be decided as of yet. We were waiting for the board action before we could, uh, move forward in developing a new itinerary.
And I have a question. So if the itinerary then needs to be approved by, and at what point does that? See for a model tour on comp and to be a change, like, if the children do need to be supported at school, do you have the approval to do that?
Um, as I said to you in the email that I sent, uh, every effort would be made to keep the travel dates as close as possible to the current travel dates. As you know, from the forms that you signed, um, some of, some of those possibilities may not be possibilities, in fact. It is dependent.
The last time, I would indicate that the board, I mean, who would be able to take that, that themselves.
Um, as, as a matter of fact, um, there, there is a, the, one of the forms that you did sign, um, does say that the trip could be canceled. Um, and I would ask you to take another look at that.
I know this question wasn't asked to me, but...
But I would say that as a board member, and I probably speak for everybody here, whether you voted in favor or not of, of, um, item number eight, that if there's an, an alternative itinerary that's presented, I think all of us would get together at a moment's notice in a special meeting to approve anything that goes forward.
And is that going to, is that going to happen? Would we change the order?
I'm not going to entertain all these questions until we hear from EF and listen to, well...
authorize superintendent to, normally we, we vote to approve an, an itinerary, but we have authorized her, okay, to do a future presentation at a Board of Education meeting, sorry.
I mean, we could call a special meeting for anything, so, um, as soon as, um, we gather the information, um, I will not make it any more difficult for the students and parents involved and we will, um, get this done as soon as possible. And I certainly apologize for any inconvenience. Okay, moving on to number ten, announcement.
The Monday was...
Um, yeah, where is the meeting on Monday night?
The Monday would...
For, in...
That's on a different agenda. That's, that's not on...
No, the Mondays, I think it's Thursday.
The travel agent.
I was just wondering when the meeting is with the travel.
The meeting Monday night, date, time, that's what I said.
That information is, uh, should have gone out to the parents already from the trip advisors.
I wanted to know what...
I'd gladly tell you, but I don't have it.
Okay, announcement of future meetings. Thursday, February, um, two thou, uh, two thousand and fifteen, um, a special Board of Education meeting at Central Office to discuss technology. That'll be at, I thought it was at, uh, six-thirty. Okay, Thursday...
Pat, there's no date on that.
Yeah, I know. February fifth.
That's at seven o'clock. That's the information I have. Isn't that right, Paul?
Yeah. Well, I'm looking at-
The fifth. And that's already on...
We have a meeting on the fifth. For finance and facilities. But that's going to be the technology meeting, uh, on that date. You can help, all right, go ahead.
Uh, Thursday, February fifth, there is a special Board of Education meeting, Thursday, February fifth, at six-thirty, at Central Office. Thursday, February fifth, there is a finance and facilities meeting at seven-thirty at Central Office. It, it should be seven-thirty.
All right, say that, say that again. Finance and facilities will be at seven-thirty and the board meeting will be at six-thirty? Is that what you're saying?
That's correct.
What is, what is the agenda topic, sir? Thursday, February?
Yes. Special meeting.
Right. One of the topics was the approval of the, of the revised field trip.
Okay, Monday, February ninth, the Personal Policies and Curriculum Committee will meet at the Media Center at the high school at six o'clock and we will have our regular Board of Education meeting in the All Purpose Room at seven-thirty. of Education meeting in the All Purpose Room at 7:30. Wednesday, February 11th, there'll be a Finance and Facilities Committee at Central Office at 5:30. And now I need a motion to table executive session for an update on pending litigation and for the purpose of the discussion of the superintendent's mid-year performance.
And why do you want to table that?
Not everybody is present tonight.
So if everybody's not here, the next time we meet, we won't go into executive session for this topic?
I don't know.
I mean, it was asked of a board member that, you know, really made every attempt to be here, and she felt that it was very important, not so much the pending litigation, but the second item, and that the board would honor her request for this.
And seeing that this is not our regular Monday schedule, I'm trying to accommodate her schedule. You can either vote to table it or not. Okay. Okay. Okay, is there --
I'll make the motion that we move to table item number 11.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, and any abstentions? None. Okay, could I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second? Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Good night.